Hey, good evening. I now call to order the Pittsvenny County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, seven P. M. at the Board Meeting Room, thirty-nine Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. Caitlin, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cheshire.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Present.
Mr. Barksdale.
Here.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes, present. If you would, let's take a moment to have a moment of silence, please. And now, if you would, let's rise for our pleasure of ladies.
(inaudible) United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, I make a motion to add the following items to the agenda under Matters from Work Session. Item thirteen A, victim witness additional funding. Item thirteen B, insurance premiums. Item thirteen C, EMS certification testing. And also like to move item twelve, new business, right after the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scares. What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any discussion or comments about that, if you would, gentlemen, cast your vote.
Still not up there? Let me just get your vote verbally, Mr. Cheshire.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. What about a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. What about a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cheshire, thank you, sir. Any discussion on this? And if you would, cast your vote, gentlemen.
Still ain't getting it?
We apologize for the delay in the software, but...
He seconded.
We're gonna get some new software.
Okay, is it showing on your screens now? All right. Go ahead and vote. You can vote now.
All right, thank you. What about a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. About a second? Mr. Barksdale, you want to second that?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on consent agenda? Gentlemen, cast your vote.
Mr. Cheshire, can I get your vote verbally? Oh, we got it in there, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. That brings us down to new business, which is twelve A, correct, Caitlin? We good on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a presentation for the Thomas family, so if you guys would come up and if my colleagues would meet me down front here.
Let's do the vote first. If you wanna go over the summary, then we'll take care of that first.
I make the motion, let me go ahead and find it and read it here. It's not written out as such, but I make the motion that we present a resolution naming a bridge off of Highway twenty-nine North at Charlestown Level, which is six eighty-five, in memory of Deputy Sheriff Jay Holland Thomas Senior, that we name this the Holland Thomas Senior Memorial Bridge. That's my motion. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that, gentlemen?
I'm sure this is gonna be fine for everybody, but I'd just like to be sure, since it's in Mr. Barksdale's district, that you support this, Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Okay, then I have absolutely no issue with it.
Absolutely. I talked to Jesse Way before this thing got as far as it is now, so we're good to go.
I would say one other thing, though. Mr. Ingram was sharing with me just a few minutes ago, a little bit of this history, and...
And I was gonna touch on it, Danny.
Yeah, I know you're gonna do it down there, too, but, you know, I think it'd be really, it would've been nice to have gotten all of it out and a little more PR about something as, as nice as what you were telling me.
Sure.
In, in advance, maybe if we did it, you know, through the naming committee or something, we'd have time to do it early.
Sure.
That's, that's my only comment. I'm, I'm happy to support it.
Oh, yeah. Seven up. We're good.
Okay.
Gary, if you would, come over here, stand beside me, and Warren may be on the other side. And you guys just come over. All right, this is a combination of the Thomas and Holland family, all cousins or brothers or something, but it is such an honor to be able to present this resolution. Gary, you're gonna get this. This is Gary Thomas, but let me read this to you, and I did have some comments I'd like to make. This is Pittsvenny County Board of Supervisors, Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero seven dash zero three, support for naming the Business US twenty-nine, Highway twenty-nine North Bridge in Pittsvenny County, Virginia, Banister District, the Deputy Sheriff Jay Holland Thomas Senior Memorial Bridge. Virginia, at the Pittsvenny County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas the Board is committed to recognizing and celebrating the county's historical heritage and contributions made thereto by its citizens, and whereas Deputy Sheriff Jay Holland Thomas Senior was a Pittsvenny County deputy who was killed in line of duty while serving the citizens of Pittsvenny County, and whereas on October eighth, nineteen fifty-two, while attempting to arrest a wanted man for killing his employer, who supposedly owed him eighteen dollars, Thomas received gunfire from a twelve-gauge shotgun blast to his chest and abdomen area, and whereas Thomas was taken to the Danville Memorial Hospital, where he underwent several surgeries to have the pellets removed, and whereas doctors were able to remove most of the pellets, but were unable to remove some from the abdomen, and Thomas was released from the hospital two weeks later and returned home, and whereas Deputy Thomas never fully recovered and was forced to retire from the sheriff's office, and whereas in March of nineteen fifty-six, one of the pellets caused an infection and internal bleeding that led to his death, and whereas Thomas had been in law enforcement for thirty-three years and was survived, survived by his wife, two sons, two daughters, and seven grandchildren, and three sisters, and whereas the law enforcement officers saved countless lives by protecting county and Virginia citizens through rigorous law enforcement and patrolling of state and county roadways, and every day they braved every present danger to assist a stranded motorist to investigate gun, drug, and human trafficking, to stop public corruption, to bring closure to devastated families, and to stop dangerous driving and dangerous individuals, and whereas Thomas is an example of the dedication of the county sheriff's office, and it's fitting that the Board remember his ultimate sacrifice, and whereas thirty-three dash two dash thirteen of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended, authorizes the Commonwealth Transportation Board, the CTP, to give suitable names to state highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities, and change the names of any highways, bridges, interchanges, or other transportation facilities forming a part of the systems of the state highway, and whereas the same Virginia Code section further provides that the Virginia Department of Transportation, which is VDOT, should place and maintain appropriate signs indicating the names of highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities named by the CTP. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Board fully and enthusiastically supports the naming of the Business US Highway twenty-nine North Bridge in Pittsvenny County, Banister District, the location of said bridge depicted in more detail on the map attached heretofore, and made a part fully thereof as the Deputy Sheriff Jay Holland Thomas Senior Memorial Bridge, and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Thomas family, appropriate local VDOT officials, and the CTP for consideration, given under my hand this nineteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-two. William V. Ingram, Chairman, Pittsvenny County Board of Supervisors, Clarence C. Monday, Clerk of the Pittsvenny County Board of Supervisors. You have this opportunity, as well as other family members, to, to speak, so if you wanna, you got anything, Gary?
I'd like to thank the, thank the Board of Supervisors for this recognition for my grandfather. I think the, the county and the sheriff's office specifically, over the last many years, has, has done a great job at recognizing our slain officers, and I'm very proud of what y'all have done and are doing. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Gary. You, you guys lost a loved one. You lost your, your grandfather, but I wanted to tell y'all that this family has such a beautiful heritage of, of law enforcement service. Holland Thomas, who I never knew, lived out here on the Charlestown Level Road and was shot during a manhunt off Route forty-one and subsequently died of his injuries. But he had a son named Billy, who was police chief here in Chatham for years, and I did know Billy and did work with him, which would be Gary's daddy. And then here comes Gary, and he goes to work for Danville Police, and then subsequently Virginia Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC, and retired there, and then Mike Taylor gave him a job here. Oh, there's Mike. So it, it's just a long, beautiful heritage of service to this county, and this is one of the sad, dark times of, of that history, but thankfully, we're able, at this point in time, to... Yes, grandson Donald, who also retired from the sheriff's office as a captain, and, and, and of course Lauren is Gary's...
Sheriff.
Say who then?
Molly.
Yeah, Molly over there. Molly works for the sheriff's office, and some of these other Mollys, there's one there, and there's one back there, and I think there's a couple missing, but anyway, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the citizens of Pittsvenny County, thank you guys so much for, for coming out, being with us, and, and we just thank you for the service and the sacrifice of your grandfather. Jones, Dr. Walker, and Ms. Crump, I believe. All three of y'all coming up? If you would, please. Welcome, Dr. Jones, Cassandra, and, well, Mike Taylor, gone to work for the school system. Come on up here.
Mr. Ingram, Mr. Ingram, members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Mr. Monday. Thank you for this opportunity for us to speak on behalf of the sales tax referendum this, this evening, and on behalf, on behalf our school board as well. We've been out and about over the past couple of months, or really several months, spreading this word of the, the good fortune that we have in Pittsvenny County to have a, on the ballot in November, the sales tax referendum, where the funds can be used for capital projects for the schools. You know, you all are aware that we have many older buildings in our county. We have a building that's eighty-four years old, up to buildings that, that are fifty-eight years old, and these, these buildings are gonna be in need of many renovations over the next several years. I'm very fortunate to have with me this, this evening Sheriff Taylor and Mrs. Cassandra Crump, who will speak with you regarding their thoughts about the sales tax referendum and the impact that it will have on our school division, but we thank you all for, through resolution, signing a resolution and sending it to our circuit court judge for this order to be approved, for it to be on the ballot next year. It's just very important for our children, the future of our county, to have, to be able to compete across the state with their peers nationally, internationally. You know, it's gonna be a different world for them, and we need, we all know the importance of our children to our county, and this surely makes that statement. So at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Crump or Sheriff Taylor if they'd come forward.
Leading to Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Just a couple of things. First, I'd like to say that I'm speaking on behalf as a citizen, the comments that I'm about to make. From that perspective, I agree with your support on supporting the referendum. It, it was a big step for you all to take, especially in these times, but you saw the worth and the long-term worth in supporting that referendum. And the advancement in the, in the construction, if it's passed, will of course diminish utility dependencies and bring those buildings up to date with the most modern technologies available to our students. I speak to you now as your sheriff and in keeping up with today's environment. I read recently that schoolchildren worry more now about what's gonna happen to them in a day's time than they do the school grades, and that's a, a fact that we should really consider when we talking about the referendum. The reality is that crime and violence has become common in schools across our nation. Our children are exposed to more and more acts of crimes and violence in their environment and the school system each day. A statistic is eighty-seven percent of the violent threats come from the students inside the schools. In a recent FBI report, nineteen percent of arrests for arson's were from children under fifteen years old of age. So it's the environment inside and outside of the schools that we worry about. Parents should not be concerned when they put their children on the school buses each day that they're gonna not come home unhung. And the only way we can help that environment is to make sure our schools are secure. My hope is that if the referendum does pass, that a portion of those funds will be appropriated for school safety from the foundation up. These acts of violence disrupt the learning and creates a negative environment on the students, a stressful environment on the staff and the teachers as well, and of course, our community. And unfortunately, we have seen over and over and over again those stresses in our nation. There've been twenty-seven school shootings in the United States this year alone, unheard of, and a hundred and nineteen school shootings have occurred since two thousand and eighteen. So for the concerns of the safety, and the safety equates to funding, I am in support of the referendum, and I, again, I appreciate your support in all that you've done in moving this forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Crump?
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Good evening to all of the board members and those in attendance. I'd like to thank Dr. Jones for sharing about our needs and Sheriff Taylor for sharing regarding the safety of our schools, and I appreciate that there are ways for us to be proactive as we continue to pray that we will never need to be reactive in regards to safety. The one percent sales tax will help provide needed funds to make the proactive upgrades for safety and to also move forward some of the capital improvement needs of our school. I've had an opportunity to attend many of the budget information sessions that were provided by the county administration over the past few years, and I heard many citizens repeatedly ask the administration to come up with alternative ways of generating revenue. This one percent sales tax does that. It will allow individuals who make purchases in the county to contribute to the upgrading of our schools. As we know, these funds can only be used for those capital improvement projects, but as members of the community, we have an opportunity to see these much-needed changes as they're being made. We'll have buildings that our students and staff can be safe in, facilities that prepare our students for the future. We ask you, as board members, for your continued support and sharing the importance of this with those that you come in contact with, and please advise them or share with them that they can reach out to members of the Pittsvenians for Brighter Futures two thousand and twenty-two Committee, visit our Facebook page or website if they have questions regarding the one percent sales tax. The website has an excellent FAQ section that answers many of the questions that have been asked, and in closing, I'd like to say that as citizens of Pittsvenny County, we will be asked the following important question on November eighth. Should Pittsvenny County be authorized to levy a general retail sales tax at a rate not to exceed one percent, provided the revenue from the sales tax shall be solely used for the capital projects for the construction or renovation of school in Pittsvenny County, and that sales tax shall expire by February fifteenth, two thousand and forty-two? We hope that the answer to this question is yes. It can make a huge difference for many generations to come, right here in Pittsvenny County. We appreciate you all for allowing us to come to share with you this evening, and we have, if anyone is interested, some flyers that give additional information, as well as signs tonight for those who might like those, and if you all, as board members, have questions, we would be happy to entertain those at this time.
Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Warren?
Ms. Crump, thank you for being here. I don't really have a question, but I have a statement to make. Following last month's presentation, there were some discussions about Halifax County, who passed this before, and they were experiencing, it appears, about thirty percent of the sales tax revenue is coming from non-Halifax County residents, and I would ask our citizens to seriously consider, we're gonna have these expenses, these capital needs expenses. Don't you want somebody else to pay thirty percent of our bills? If you were talking about your home budget, wouldn't you like to have some source that was gonna pay thirty percent of whatever you need to do to your home for you? So I, I just think it's an opportunity for us to, to take advantage of creating a better and, more safe environment for our students and our faculty, and we have that obligation. We, we talked about the other buildings that are not specifically attached to the main buildings and the safety issues that creates and all, so I hope our citizens will think long and hard and vote to support this in November. It is very important to our community and to our young folks who are our greatest asset, and it gives us an opportunity to retain more of those folks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anyone else?
I agree with everything you said. If there's any way we can get somebody else to pay these bills, I'm in favor of that. And you know, you talk about one penny on a dollar. Most of us go out to eat in other localities and think nothing of it, so thank y'all so much for your presentation.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all. Caitlin, do we have any other presentations?
No, sir. We are down to hearing of the citizens.
All right, thank you so much. We're down to hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the Board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the resident agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice...
Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during this section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Kaylin, we have anybody signed up?
We do. Jim Scares.
Come on up, Mr. Scares.
My name is Jim Scares, and I live in the Westover District. First off tonight, I would like to thank the Danville Regional Foundation for providing the county with a $25,000 grant to help pay the Berkeley Group's fee for the national search for a new county administrator. I would also like to thank supervisors Warren and Barksdale for their hard work to secure the grant from the Danville Regional Foundation. Unfortunately, $25,000 will not be enough to pay the Berkeley Group's total fee of $30,000. In last month's board meeting, the chairman of this board misled the citizens of this county when he stated the nationwide search would not cost the citizens of the county anything because the county had received a grant from the Danville Regional Foundation. This was his main excuse for not wanting to do a national search in January. He said it would burden the county citizens with an unneeded cost. Plus, he had already, he already had one of his good old boys he wanted to install in that position. Thankfully, that little deal fell through. Now we know the truth, that we're going to be on the hook for $5,000. This is just the latest misstep from the incompetent leadership of this board. We are in this mess because their first less-than-brilliant move was to fire the former county administrator because they claimed he made too much. Mr. Smithman was paid a base salary of $188,000 after his last pay raise. After firing Mr. Smithman, they brought a part-time intermittent administrator, brought in a part-time intermittent administrator, who works less than a forty-hour work week. For the first four months, the intermittent administrator was paid roughly $71,910. If you multiply that out to January, that's going to be around $280,000, almost $100,000 more than Mr. Smithman was being paid. The next less-than-brilliant move they are talking about making is taking $170,000 from the contingency funding to give to the fire and rescue agencies. And this is after already doubling what they are giving them for fuel costs. The contingency fund is supposed to be set up to cover emergencies that arise during the year that have not been budgeted for. We just started the fiscal year, and the leadership of this board already wants to raid the contingency fund to benefit one of their special interest groups. My question to the people of this county is this: When are you going to wake up and realize that the current leadership of this board has no clue as to what they are doing? Don't be surprised if in the near future they announce the need for a property tax increase to pay for all their financial blunders. Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else, Kaylin?
Yes, and I'm going to apologize. I'm going to try to get this. Lori?
Come on up.
That's okay. That's all right.
If you would, pull that mic down so we can hear you. Pull that mic down. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Lori Makeff. I'm from Gretna. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Vasco Colmeyer grew up in a former communist Czechoslovakia, and so he is very sensitive to the devastating effects of propaganda. The following excerpt is a piece entitled "The Global COVID Vaccination Campaign Is Courting Catastrophe." It is published in February fourteen, twenty-two, an online journal, American Thinker. To establish that a vaccine is safe, extensive long-term testing must be carried out. This process involves multi-phase clinical trials and observational studies, which include large numbers of subjects over periods of time measured in years. This thorough and involved process takes at least five years to complete and is usually much longer, according to Johns Hopkins University. A typical vaccine development timeline takes five to ten years and sometimes longer to assess whether the vaccine is safe and infectious in clinical trials, complete and regulatory approval processes, and manufacture sufficient quantity of the vaccine doses for widespread distribution. Only upon satisfactory completion of this involved regimen can a vaccine be considered reasonably safe for mass administration to the general public. Yet even the completion of this long process does not guarantee that the vaccine is completely safe. After receiving full approval, vaccines continue to be carefully monitored for adverse events in case some vaxinal flaw may have escaped detection during the multi-year trial phase. There have been a number of vaccines that were pulled from the market after they received full approval due to unexpected safety issues. Some of these include vaccines for rotavirus, Lyme disease, whole cell pertussis, among others. Therefore, a vaccine is justifiably declared completely safe. It must undergo at least five years of intensive testing and clinical trials, then several years of monitoring as it is administered in populations at large. The COVID vaccine, however, was publicly declared to be completely safe less than eight months after the start of human clinical trials. On a normal vaccine trial timeline, month eight is phase two of the three-stage clinical trial regime, regimen. I said it wrong. The claim that COVID vaccines are completely safe was therefore completely unjustifiable and unsubstantiated. Those who made this claim engaged in deliberate and unconscionable act of public deception. And yet, this claim is used as a basis for worldwide campaign in which more than half of the earth's inhabitants have been injected with an experimental pharmaceuticals that did not undergo the proper testing. The phrase "safe and effective" became a de facto slogan of the planet-wide vaccination enterprise, believing that vaccines were completely safe, billions of people willingly and even enthusiastically lined up to receive their COVID injections. I just think we've all been duped by Big Pharma into taking poison.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Kaylin, anyone else?
Barbara Hancock.
Ms. Hancock, come on down. Good to see you, Barbara.
My name is Barbara Hancock. I live in the Callens-Gretna District. I'm with Save the Vax. I worked in Western medicine from the ages of sixteen to forty-three as a medical assistant and then became a registered nurse at the age of twenty-two, of which I continue to carry the licensure. During those years, I worked directly with patients in an acute care hospital setting, directed nurses who worked with the patients and worked as a clinical education specialist. In 2014, I started to wake up to natural healing modalities through my own research as I wondered why young people around me were suffering with cancer and then faced my own battle with an ovarian tumor later that year. That was the beginning of my journey into realizing the barbaric nature of modern medicine. Although I worked in it for many years and saw many great things but many terrible things, I didn't realize that there were other methods to heal from various sickness and disease. Although it took me years to fully wake up to the barbaric nature of modern medicine, 2020 and 2021 really helped to pull that trigger, as I watched many of my former colleagues succumb to the mandates of their bosses to get a vaccine and then suffer the consequences to their health. I also watched some of you, as supervisors, push the people of Pittsavania County to get the COVID-19 vaccine without knowledge or regard to what health consequences that would bring to each individual. There may have been more, but the two leaders that I recall were former Callens-Gretna supervisor Ben Farmer and our current chairman, Mr. Ingram. Our county even went as far as giving each county employee major incentives to get the vaccine, including two hours paytime off to get the injection, then eight hours of personal time to take whenever wanted, and a $1,000 bonus after proof of the first and second injections. Sadly, I know of several county personnel, as well as many other people, now suffering with new health issues. Each of you were given a packet like this, and I encourage you all to carefully go through and read the articles and the information. The first one talks about the COVID-19 vaccination impaired semen. The second one talks about the Pfizer dangers for pregnant women. The next one is a case for public health and medical professionals for transparency versus the FDA. The next one is FDA says it now needs seventy-five years to fully release Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine data. And the last one is one spike protein, 1,291 diseases, unlimited ways to die. We need to take this serious. We need to offer hope to those who want to wake up to these issues, and I encourage you all to look at the references on these, especially this last one, but they're all really good, but this one in particular caught my attention. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Ms. Hancock. All right, Kaylin, anyone else?
That's all.
Thank you all so much. Item 10, public hearings, rezoning public hearings. Pursuant to Article Five, Division Six of Pittsavania County zoning ordinance, Pittsavania County Board of Supervisors has been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pittsavania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interests of Pittsavania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Case number one, open the floor for public hearing, case R-22-013. Ms. Rexdale, please. Open it at seven thirty-eight, by the way.
Case R-22-013, Wynn Properties LLC has petitioned to rezone 6.25 acres located on State Road 722, Oakwood Drive in the Tunstall Election District, from RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to allow for a mobile home park. On June seventh, 2022, the planning commission recommended by seven to zero vote with opposition that the petitioner's request be denied. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Rick Fain is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Fain, come on up, sir.
Thank you, Emily.
Good evening, everyone. I represent Mrs. Wynn of Wynn Properties regarding this. The parcel in question has been used as a mobile home park with, I believe, six mobile homes on it. As I understand, the Pittsavania County will allow up to eight per acre, but she's only wanting the other two that are not grandfathered in because of being used as mobile homes already in the last two years. So to summarize, out of the six, she's allowed to use four of those, and to purchase the property, she needs the other two, and that's why it's necessary to rezone as a mobile home park. It's not her intention at all to bust out a full-on mobile home park with all those mobile homes. As a matter of fact, the topography of the land won't really allow for that, much more than the six already there. But the wells and septics and plots and everything are already there for the six, and that's really all she's asking for. Last time I faced opposition from local neighbors on the street, talking about a stereotype of your typical mobile home occupant, and I just don't think that's fair, as anybody, just like any other lifestyle choice, has a choice to live in a mobile home park, stick-built house, whatever they need to do, whatever suits them best.
All right, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Doris Thomas.
Jordan Thomas, correct? Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just pull that mic down a little bit, if you would.
Doris Thomas. I am in the Danville address, but I'm in the Brazzville area, directly on Oakwood Drive. In 1998, this, the supervisors and the superintendents had gone ahead and okayed for that first development of trailer park. It was a disaster. We had to come back when he wanted to up that amount from what he's stating to nine. I think it was eight or nine. While we were there, they went ahead and showed pictures of it, and the superintendent said, you know, you need to clean it up because it was weedy. None of the trailers were in good condition. There were holes in the floor. I knew, I actually witnessed it. Nothing was ever done, but when the supervisor said, you need to clean it up, he brought pictures back. Oh, yes, he did. He cleaned it up good. But what he did was throw everything across the fence into our property, into the creek, which now, since it's been so long and we've had flooding, it's all down at the pond, at the bottom. We had children all over our property. We lived directly next to it. We had horses. Because he had gone ahead and thrown it over, we had to barbed wire off that section of fence. The trailers are always secondhand when they bring them in to a trailer park. They're not in good condition, but not only that, they don't keep them up. They let it go into disrespare. They go ahead and make sure that nobody's going to interfere. And I can tell you, you can put a no trespassing sign up, and it doesn't matter. There's a lot of things that went wrong. We have lived there fifty-two years. My husband is eighty-three, no, he's eighty-four, excuse me, and I'm eighty-two. We have remodeled, we have redone our property, the whole nine yards, and I can tell you, you put in a trailer park, our property's going to go down the hill. I thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Kaylin, anyone else?
Yes. Patricia Collins.
Good evening.
I'd like to refer back to the petition I brought with me that day that I came. There's a petition that I had a bunch of signatures on. There was also pictures that I put into a book, like a photo album, and I'd like to refer back to those. Are those present? And some pictures of what the trailer park looked like.
No, we're okay with that. Just, you go ahead.
You can look at it.
Yes, ma'am.
And you need to look at it, and you need to see it. What the problem is, they got that place put in with the, oh, we're going to load it up with trailers. Well, we came and we did the same thing we're doing here again, and we're saying, no, we do not want a trailer park down there because we live there. They don't live there, we do. We know, and we've seen what happened with the last batch of trailers that came in there, and it was nothing but a nightmare. They throw trash all up and down the road. It was a nightmare for them people to get in and out of the road. It's a safety hazard. That property is like a V going down. There's a big slope down, a big slope on the back side and the front side, and it goes down into nothing but a gully. Those people couldn't get out in the wintertime. They parked up at the top of the road, and it's very narrow up there at the top of the road, and there is no room for expansion on that road whatsoever. People parked up there, they were half on the road, half into the side of the gully. If they went any further off the road, they'd have been in a ditch. So these people sitting there parking up there in the wintertime, there's snow and ice going down there, and we're trying to get up that road to go to work. We're trying to go down that road, trying to come home from work. School buses going up and down that School buses going up and down that road, and there's barely enough room to go past a school bus. At the top of the road, very little room. If a school bus is there, you better carry it on down the road, turn around, and come back. And I sat there and looked at it, and I thought, well, maybe we ought to petition to ask for them to put a little turn spot. Well, I got a picture of that, too. There's nothing there, no room to put a turn spot because it's nothing but a straight ditch all the way down. So to put a trailer park in there with any amount of trailers extra of what is on that road is nothing but a dangerous health hazard to our, and it's just dangerous all the way around. There's two ponds down there. There's a pond at the top, there's Hardy's Creek that runs down through there. My question isn't just for this, the danger of the street, it's an overall thing. EPA needs to be looking at the mess that's down there now. It needs to be cleaned up. How much of that stuff is leaching into the water system, the water table, going down into the creek? Because all that drainage coming down off that property is going right down into the pond and down the creek, and all the way across Hardy River, Hardy Creek, and that goes down to Sandy River, all the way down into Dammel into the Dan River. So it's not just a matter of danger, it's an EPA issue, and that stuff needs to be cleaned up. And if they buried any of that trailer stuff down there and that debris, it needs to be dug up, and it needs to be tested. I don't know if they did or didn't, but you hear things, you know? So it all needs to be cleaned up, and anything down there that's contaminated needs to be hauled up and pulled out and cleaned up because it is nothing but a health hazard. And that goes into our water, and our drinking water, and they say that they're not going to put no more than X number of trailers, and they don't want to do that. Why would they buy a piece of property, pay that kind of money for it, and not do anything but put a few mobile homes? And they're not going to buy that property and pay an arm and a leg for it, and then put some brand-new trailers in there, and then turn around and rent them up, rent them out and be tore up. It's going to be for another, whatever their reason is, and if they can get X number of trailers in there, they're going to put every one they can put in there, and there's no, and my question, too, is not just the water table and everything, but what about the septic tanks in there now?
Yes, ma'am. You've gone over a little bit, but thank you, we understand.
I got on roll.
I noticed that, that's okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, Caitlin?
Yes, Dewey Brown.
You say Jimmy Brown?
Dewey.
Billy Brown. Come on up, sir.
Dewey or Don'twood? Dewey.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Dewey Brown. I'm over in the Tunstall District, got property right down the road from where this is, and my mom is sitting back here, too. She owns the property that goes around probably two-thirds of this property, too, where it borders on that 722 Oakwood Drive. She owns two-thirds of it, and Ms. Thomas, who you talked a minute ago, is the other person that owns the property around it. I echo the concerns they had. First, I do want to thank you all for hearing us and letting us be here, and I believe you're the chairman of the Planning Commission? Or you're on the Planning Commission? Am I right on that?
No, sir.
I had somebody wrong.
Mr. Dalton's on the Planning Commission.
Okay, sorry, okay. But I appreciate the Planning Commission hearing us before, too, and I do oppose this, and I'll go down through here, just a couple of reasons, and some of it's reemphasizing it. You know, I do have a concern with the management based on what you've heard in the past. I agree with Mr. Bane, there's some good parks out there. I'm not going to say this is going to be one way or the other. I lived in one that was great. But our experience before with trash in our fields, my mom has a horse business and had horses with trash in there, dogs running loose in there, no matter what we did, we kept having the issues. Doors, lights, and everything else is some of our concerns. Let's see, as far as road access, that's a small opening where that park has to go into. Even if it's only six trailers, I can't believe, to her point, they're going to limit it to six. When you talk about, I think of seven or eight per acre, you do the math on that, that's going to be 30 to 40-some trailers at least. I don't think they can fit in there anyway, but still, even if you bump it up from that, I don't think that's good, the access in there. You don't have a good place to put a turn lane in there. It's in a curve in that road, which is not very good either. Let's see. Environmental, I do, that does concern me. The pond that was talking about everything flowing down into, that's my mom's pond. I mean, that's where all that stuff flows right into. And with all the, you know, runoff of cars, just in general, you get oil, gas, whatever, spills and stuff like that, that is a concern up, coming down into there. Obviously, the sewers are there, more strain on our water table out there. And let's see. You know, the rural home, not mean the rural home, the mobile home park zoning allows much more than just mobile homes, too. I think there's other things that can be put in there, too, which would be a concern if anything besides just a home would be in there. And that's my quick note, but I just want to say thank you for your time, and I do voice my opposition to this, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I agree with the recommendation of the committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Caitlin, anyone else?
That's all.
All right. Now close the public hearing at 7:51 PM. Before I read this motion, I wanted to say uncategorically, I have nothing against trailers or trailer parks. Thankfully, that offers, you know, a nice place for a lot of people to live. But I'm very familiar with this road, and I've gotten a lot of complaints about the possibility of a mobile home park going in there. But in addition to the residents there complaining that they don't want this, it's a safety concern, and when VDOT and the Planning Commission says, we don't recommend that, between that and the citizens, I'm going to listen. So I'm going to make the motion in case number R 22-013 to deny the rezoning of 6.25 acres from RC 1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park due to the safety concerns and VDOT's inability to approve the required commercial entrance at this location. That's the motion. What about a second? A second motion. Second. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Third. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I just have a curiosity question, Ms. Fain.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us, were there ever any proffers offered to restrict the number down? Because, man, it jumps off the page from Mr. Craddock that there could be an additional 279 vehicle trips per day if it's maxed out. And I just can't handle that. I mean...
There were no proffers offered for this case.
Okay.
I'm just curious.
That's a good question, and it's, you know, when you go in, it winds down to the left, back to the right, and then comes up. It's just, it's not a safe, safe road, I mean, as far as that goes, and I know you guys are careful, but so. Any other comments? All right, Josh. Cash your vote.
I'm sorry, you can't speak from the audience.
Yeah. Thank you, anyway.
Thank you.
So the motion to have this rezone has been denied, so your request has pretty much been granted. Thank you all for coming. Okay. Thank you all. I now open case number two, which is R 22-016. Open the public hearing at 7:54 PM. Ms. Emily.
Case R-22-016, Jasmine Ruiz has petitioned to rezone a total of 2.16 acres located on State Road 799 Climax Road in the Callens-Grettnell Election District from B 2 Business District General to R 1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow the property to be used for a single-family dwelling. On June 7, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to R 1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Jasmine Ruiz is here to represent the petition.
All right, thank you. Come on up, please. Good evening. If you would, speak directly into that mic for us.
Good evening. I'm Jasmine. Thank you for hearing me today. So this whole thing started when my parents and brother were killed in a car accident. I bought the property from Nevada because I needed to get away. The realtor assured me that I could live in the home, everything would be fine. We did a virtual tour, and things were okay. Then we had a problem where there's gasoline in our well water, and so we couldn't use our water. And then, by mistake, we ended up finding out that we weren't allowed to live in the home, and that it had to be a business. So I'm here today trying to get permission to be able to live there with my children and try and move on.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, I close that public hearing at 7:56 PM. Mr. Dalton, you have a motion?
Yes, sir. In case R 22-016, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of a total of 2.16 acres from B 2 Business District General to the R 1 Residential Subdivision, Suburban Subdivision District to allow for the property to be converted back to a single-family dwelling. The rezoning would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan.
All right. Thank you, sir. What about a second?
Second.
Mr. Barshill. Thank you, sir, and don't forget to hit that button. Any comments, questions, gentlemen? I close the public hearing at 7:56, and go ahead and cash your vote, gentlemen. And your property's been rezoned. Thank you for coming. I now open public hearing R 22-017 at 7:57 PM. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-22-017, Bradley and Heather Behren have petitioned to rezone a total of 23.81 acres located on Atlantic Timber Lane in the Callens-Grettnell Election District from RE Residential Estates District to A 1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory building and a Class B home occupation. On June 7, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A 1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Bradley Behren is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Barshill. Come on up, sir. Good to have you, sir.
My apologies for the mask. I have cancer, so if you can't hear me, you know, I'll try to respond in a better, clear, with better tone. I appreciate the time with the board, and in the interest of the time, what questions do you have for us?
I don't think we have any. We have a board packet and the Planning Commission's recommendation, and this is just an opportunity to give you a chance to say what you like, but I think we're okay with it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
All right, I close the public hearing at 7:59 PM. Mr. Dalton, would you read your motion, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, in case R-22-017, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of a total of 23.81 acres from RE Residential Estate District to the Agriculture, A 1 Agriculture District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure and a Class B home occupancy. The rezoning would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. What about a second?
Second. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any discussion? All right, gentlemen, cash your vote. And your property's been rezoned. Thank you all for coming. You can stay if you'd like. I now open public hearing case number R 22-018 at 8 PM. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-22-018, Robert and Angela Kalberg have petitioned to rezone 10.41 acres located on Reservoir View Drive in the Stanton River Election District from R 1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A 1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory building in the front yard. On June 7, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A 1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Robert Kalberg is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. Mr. Kalberg, would you like to come up and speak?
Good evening, sir.
Be happy to answer any questions, if you have some, but...
Gentlemen, any questions?
Do I have any questions?
A good thing we get a nice packet with most of our questions already answered, so thank you for coming. Anyone else?
Thank you, Bob.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:01 PM. Mr. Dudley, I believe that's yours.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, and in this case, I know this couple, very, very fine young couple with the outstanding young man, son there. So in case R-22-018, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of 10.41 acres from R 1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A 1 Agriculture District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure. The rezoning would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Warren, second. Any comments, questions, gentlemen?
Second.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Cash your vote. Mr. Kalberg, your property's been resolved. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Bob. Angela. See y'all.
We're down now, down to other public hearings. Each person who's addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, and his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak that has not signed up. So I open this public hearing at 8:02 PM, and I think, Mr. Key, you going to speak? Come on up, sir. Mr. Key, good to have you. Thank you, sir.
All right, so each year, the Fire Rescue Association reviews EMS billing rates. We formed a committee back in January. They reviewed it statewide and proposed back what has been presented to y'all today. This did go before the Fire Rescue Commission, before it was brought to the board, so it has been discussed quite a bit. The current rates are as follows. Put my eyes on here. Basic life support, non-emergent, currently at 600, is proposed to stay at 600. Basic life support emergent, currently 600, is proposed to go to 650. Advanced life support, non-emergent, currently 750, is proposed to go to 775. Advanced life support emergent is at 750, proposed to go to 800. Advanced life support 2, currently at 900, proposed to go to 1,000. No, no change in the treatment, no transport, currently at 400. Patient refusal, currently is at 75, proposed to go to 100. And the rate of mileage currently is at $16 per mile, and is proposed to go to $18 per mile. This has been advertised in the Star Tribune on July 6 and July 13. There basically is no financial impact to the county. This is mainly what the EMS agencies can charge for their services.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good job, sir. Anyone else sign up to speak?
Yes, sir.
All right, I close that public hearing at 8:04 PM. It's a pleasure to the board. I make the motion to approve the county's EMS billing rates revisions as presented. About a second. Second. Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion, gentlemen? Not cash your vote. And that passed. Thank you so much. Next is a public hearing on the Page Road property disposition. Mr. Akkott, I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:05 PM. Good to have you, Chris.
Yes, sir. Thank you. In May of 2021, the county, the City of Danville, and the Dammel Regional, Dammel, Pennsylvania Industrial Regional Facility Authority, RIFA, entered into a memorandum of understanding regarding the provision of water and sewer service to the Southern Virginia mega site at Berry Hill. As a condition of the MOU, Dammel is to receive some county-owned infrastructure necessary to serve the mega site for water and sewer. Since this is a disposition of public property, a public hearing is required. The public hearing was duly advertised in the Chatham Star Tribune on July 6 and July 13 of 2022. Following the legally required public hearing, county staff recommends the board approve the transfer of the required county-owned property to the City of Danville.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Anyone else sign up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I now close that public hearing at 8:06 PM. It's a pleasure to the board.
I make the motion, we approve the recommendation as presented by...
Make the motion, we approve the recommendation as presented by staff.
Thank you. Was that you, Mr. Dudley?
Yes sir.
All right, any discussion gentlemen? Not cast your vote. And that has passed, thank y'all. Let's see, we're down to unfinished business, is there any? Under new business, is there any?
We've taken care of that, we're down to Madison work session.
All right, just double checking. Now we're down Madison, the work session. I have item 13A, in the form of a motion, I make a motion to approve the additional funding for the victim witness program as presented in the work session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. And any discussion gentlemen?
Just like to follow up that that, that motion was very specific in that we were going to use the carryover funding and I'm assuming you wanted, your motion was to coincide with what we agreed to at the work session.
Oh absolutely, I wouldn't change that.
Yeah.
That was good, yeah.
Just want to be on the record that it's being paid for with carryover funds, not out of creating a new budget.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay. Looks like waiting. And that has passed, thank you gentlemen. I think, Mr. Skares, you have, you have two?
Mr. Chairman, I have, yes, on item 13B, insurance premiums. I'd like to make a motion to approve the health and dental insurance premium rates changes and to approve the continuously of providing $800 to each employee with HSA accounts who participates in the high deductible plan. Additionally, I further move that the employee health fund absorb a total of $34.17 per month per employee per contract.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, thank you for a second. Mr. Barstow, any discussion gentlemen? Not cast your vote.
Second.
And that passes, thank y'all. Let's see, what we got next, 13C I believe.
Sir, I make the motion that we, that staff work and do research on methods that could possibly increase the EMS certification testing and the passing rates and bring it back all information that they find so that we may try to assist our volunteers in completing this task to our August meeting.
Thank you for that motion, what about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you sir. Mr. Cheshire, any discussion? Not cast your vote. And that has passed, thank you so much. Board member reports, Mr. Cheshire, let me start with you.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you, you're doing well I see, thank you for being here. Mr. Dudley?
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank everybody for being here. It's been a long day. Got here 2:30 and we started, started working on some things and had the planning commission here and got through it and got through our work session and just thank you for your patience for being here. Thank you for the folks that are pushing this 1% referendum coming up in November. We need this, we absolutely need it. Thank everybody for their hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes sir, thank you sir. I'm going to jump down here to Mr. Dalton, you have anything?
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank all the citizens coming out tonight and speaking and all the staff for their hard work.
All right sir.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you sir. Mr. Barstow?
Yeah, good, all of our people that come out, thank you.
Good, thank you sir. Mr. Skares?
Just earlier tonight, we passed a consent agenda, there was a lot of different motions that everyone agreed on and one of those was for the appointment of the Westover District for the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services. And I just wanted to thank publicly the person that I appointed, Gail Brakely, she came up to me a few months ago and said she wanted to serve anywhere for the county and luckily this position opened up and she sent in a stellar resume and really she's completely overqualified for probably any position in the county with her background, but it just, just wanted to thank her for stepping up. It's hard sometimes for us to find volunteers that'll step into these positions and to have one drop in your lap like that, it really makes my life a lot easier and I wanted to thank her for that.
Thank you sir. Mr. Warren?
Yes sir, I have just two things. The first one is, I want to say how much I was impressed and excited to be a citizen of Pennsylvania County as I read an article in both the Danville paper and the Star Tribune in relationship to a sport event, which was a basketball game that was organized and played by past Pennsylvania County basketball players and against Danville past basketball players. And it was all done to raise funds to help support the Danville Community Engagement Program, which is designed to help at-risk youth. And it just did my heart good to see that that collaborative effort that is so important to what we do as a county, to have that relationship with our city and our leaders. So it really did me good. It probably did me even better because Pennsylvania County won, so that was a plus. So, but all joking aside, it really, it really blessed my heart to see that we had, we erased those borders when it comes to working together for things that are vital to both of us. Second thing I'd like to mention is, I have a really good friend named David Manaply that we've, we go back longer than either one of us want to admit, grew up in the same neighborhood and I'm happy to say tonight, he is setting at the All-Star Game. Because his son, a Pennsylvania County project out of Tunstall High School, made the All-Star Team in the major leagues. And I just think that's huge. The young man is obviously from a great family, but he's been through a lot, he's worked really hard to reach this goal, even been through Tommy John surgery and has actually set a couple of major league records this year. I will be communicating with the family once they're back for the All-Star Game. Joe doesn't live here currently because he's playing out in Arizona, but I would like to coordinate he's back real often with the family and an attempt to recognize them in the upcoming months, once baseball season's over. So I'll be working with him and keeping my fellow colleagues on the board supervisors abreast of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I told him I was going to try to keep this meeting to about an hour because of that All-Star Game, but bad thing about going last is that a lot of people, you know, sort of steal what you're going to talk about. But I do want to echo what Mr. Warren said, this is such an honor for Joe Manaply, Tunstall High School graduate, to be playing in the major leagues, but tonight being, playing on the All-Star Game and it's such an honor. I wanted to also thank my colleagues for allowing the passage of the resolution for Holland Thomas, that's extremely special. You know, we've lost eight deputy sheriffs and two state troopers in the line of duty in this county. We've got 95 counties in Virginia and if you go back and look, what counties have lost the most law enforcement officers? Last time I looked, we were number two in the entire state. So our mortality rate is not good, but I want to thank my colleagues for working with me on that, particularly Mr. Barstow for allowing that bridge to be named. I want to compliment Mr. Skares on his appointment to Ms. Brakely, to the Community Services Board, extremely qualified lady and it's just an honor to have somebody step up and say, I want to do something to serve. And the last thing I have is, this is sort of cool, Commonwealth Senior living at Stratford House is having a veterans breakfast in the morning at 8:30, so if you're a veteran, it's a breakfast, honor veterans and to thank, thank veterans for the service and I thought that was really nice. So having said that, what about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sitting in. Oh yeah, yeah, I'm so sorry. You know, I don't know why I get so excited about going home, but Mr. Monday, what do you have?
I'm excited to go home too, so it's all right, thank you.
No, I knew you had something. Grab that mic.
I'm good, thank you.
But I do want to, I want to thank you once again for carrying us through these times, you're doing a phenomenal job and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to serve the board and the county.
Yes sir, thank you. Mr. Hunt, you have anything? All right. You good? All right, can we go home now? Meeting adjourned.[1785.16][1785.16]